How's it everybody, welcome back to the link. It is seven thirty?
It is seven thirty-five and twenty-two, second, twenty-three, twenty-four, second, twenty-five.
Okay, well, we don't want to waste any time. Let's head into the Zoom room. Where we have got Speaker Teresa Lahey, Senator Joanne Brown, and Senator Telo Tidigui. Joining us a little bit later will be Minority Leader Senator Chris Duennius. And we're here to talk about?
Dun dun dun!
Bill one twelve.
You can't say it without saying the controversial Bill one twelve. This gives it more zing, you know, they're rating to them.
Yeah.
So, yeah, good morning, Madam Speaker, Senator Joanne, Senator Telo.
Morning.
Uh, this public hearing, I made a joke yesterday that it was better than Black Widow. No, this on Black Widow is pretty decent, but this hearing, I mean, we're just hearing it all, really. And this second one, I noticed that with the five-minute time limit that you guys had to impose because there were just too much testimony that was too long in the first hearing. We saw a varied response, right? So there was, there was just, first of all, more testimony, and then we had testimony that was a lot different than the first one, right? There were, it seemed to be like there were, it was, I don't want to say equal, but there were definitely more voices in support, and of course, we saw those in opposition. So I guess we'll just start there, Madam Speaker, your takeaway from the testimony, now that we've had a day to kind of digest everything that went down on that Monday late night?
Yeah, there was a lot of testimony, obviously, and I thought, well, I was a little, I was encouraged that a lot more of the doctors are recognizing that there is a need for a change in the art, in the current arbitration because of the costs, and that they are willing to address that. And in fact, I've had many calls and meetings with doctors and, you know, testimony that, where they are saying that they are willing to come, you know, to some kind of agreement on how to fix this cost of arbitration. So that's, that's huge, because at first, it sounded like, you know, a lot of them were denying that there was a problem. So I'm just glad, I always felt like that was going to be the first step, just getting everybody on the same page as to what the problem is, and, and, and then the solutions are going to, I think, be much easier. So that's a big step for me, I think. And I think we did get a lot of that consensus. I was so happy to see, I mean, it's not a happy thing, but I was glad to see the testimony of patients, because I, I just think it always brings us back and reminds us, you know, why we are doing this, and just focuses on, on really, you know, that there is a need, and we can't deny that. And so hopefully, we just can stay focused on that part.
What about you, Senator Brown?
Well, I certainly share the sentiments of Speaker Terahy. Definitely, it was good to hear, you know, members of the medical community, of course, they're not all in agreement, but it was good to hear, you know, recognition that obviously there is a need to address this issue. The question now is, how do we go about that? How do we find a common middle ground that we can agree on? Because obviously, I mean, we're here to represent the community. This obviously is a concern that exists, and, and, you know, we're here to, to address the justice aspect of it. You know, we recognize certainly, and we do hear, I mean, I know, we are listening, we are hearing the concerns that members of the medical profession have raised with regards to their licensing, their reputation, the impact that, you know, what could happen. Certainly, if they, they ended up having to deal with a medical malpractice case, you know, some feel very strongly that keeping the arbitration process is absolutely necessary to them to being able to practice. But at the same time, we, we obviously also listen to concerns of the community who feel they have no recourse, and some of the consequences, you know, what, what may be viewed as a negligent practice could be a lifelong harm to an individual or loss of life. And, and certainly, you know, if we're dealing with a loved one, the family member, I mean, a child, as in some cases with Mr. Lebowski, with his son, you know, obviously, no, no parent ever wants to lose a child, or think you're ever going to, you know, you're going to survive, your, your child's, and your child passes away, that, that could be the most probably terrible thing that could happen to anyone. And money is not going to bring that loss back. You know, there's no amount of money in the world that could ever bring that back, but our people have to have a sense that there is, there is a recourse. I mean, it's some of the discussion, of course, of the testimony focused on, oh, sometimes we just need to sit and talk and, and have feedback and interaction. You have patients that are saying, you know, my doctor never relayed this information, or after something happened, didn't explain why this was the case. I mean, obviously, individual patients feeling, we weren't heard, our concerns weren't addressed. There could always be different interpretations of a certain circumstance. But at the same time, I don't think those things can simply be ignored, and we can just go back to things as they were. I think, I think there's definitely a need to sit down and work out what can be a viable solution that not everyone will be happy. I mean, no matter what it is, not everyone's going to be happy with it, but, but what do we have that, that creates a better community for, for our medical community, but, but certainly also, more importantly, for our, for members of our community, our, our people out there that may feel they have been negligently harmed. I mean, we're not going after good doctors in our community. I don't think anyone would get into this profession in, you know, with the intent to harm. I mean, when you look at the very, you know, purpose of, of why someone would, would become a medical professional, obviously, is to help, help our people, and more importantly, help our people here on Guam. So that's certainly what I, what I took away from the hearing that we had on Monday evening.
Senator Tidigui, your takeaways? Senator Tidigui?
Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't hear it. Thank you. Thank you, Sabrina, and good morning to everyone in the KUAM family and those who are listening today. I think, you know, I echo the sentiments of both the Speaker and Senator Brown, they both hit it on the nail. There's not much more to say, only that I think that the process, they're realizing that a process needs to be put into place that is less cost prohibitive, and several times, they've all mentioned the issue of how costly it is for arbitration, even from other constituents that have come forward, saying, let's find a solution that makes it less, you know, prohibitive, prohibitive on cost. And, you know, I thought Bill one, one-two does that, you know, finding a way that makes it more accessible for individuals who don't have the funding, who can't even borrow on, like, a hundred dollars from somebody, they just don't have the money to do so. And even some of the other doctors too have mentioned, you know, don't think that just because we're doctors, we have, you know, all this money, we also have, you know, loans we have to pay off, and, and twenty thousand dollars to them is quite a bit for some of these doctors as well. And so recognizing that, I think that we still need to focus on one main goal that we're trying to do, is find accessibility for everybody in any walks of life to be able to ask themselves to justice system. If they've been wronged, we as legislators, we as public leaders, we have the ability to make that right as senators, and that's what we're trying to do with this bill, find a way to make it available for everybody, you know, indigenous or, or even middle-class people. Not, not everybody has twenty thousand or forty thousand dollars laying around, you know, to go after something they feel they've been wronged by. Everybody has the right to the judicial system. I mean, that's our given right, our freedom, or, you know. And I think that we're getting closer to finding a solution. We're meeting with, we're meeting with doctors. The Speaker and I met over the weekend, and not just the Speaker and I, but other senators, met with doctors personally, you know. So the doctors say that we're not, you know, meeting with them, that's not true. We are meeting with them. Every time they call, we will meet with them. I know I do. So I think that the doctors too are not just hearing what we have to say, but I've been hearing that doctors are having patients coming into their office, and they're bringing this up as their patients. They, they're talking to their doctors, saying, hey, so what's going on, Doc, with, you know, and then they start bringing up other doctors they feel that are, you know, not doing very, doing a very good job as a doctor. And this was brought to my attention by one doctor, and I, I just didn't even think about that, that they're not only hearing from those testifying, but patients coming into their office questioning and asking. So this is good.
Senator Chris Duennius, Minority Leader, joins us in the KUAM News Zoom Room. Senator Duennius, we're kind of just unpacking the testimony, the tone, what was your takeaway from Monday night's hearing?
Well, thanks, Chris, and Bree, and happy to be on with my colleagues here. I think consistently, more of the same, I think that we heard certainly passionate, passionate testimony from those who feel as though they've been, you know, affected through their journey on, on a medical issue, several that KUAM has covered. I think those were, you know, great testimonies to encapsulate, you know, how the view is from the patient and the caregiver side. But I, I think most importantly, and as I mentioned at the conclusion of the hearing, I, I think, in my opinion, there's kind of a change and a shift now to, you know, being more solution-oriented and wanting to find a solution, having this continuous concerns with the way that the medical community feels about the structure of the bill, but also being willing to sit down and, and find an equitable solution, possibly through amendments and more, more discussion on the bill. So that was my takeaway. Of course, you know, it's, it's, it was contentious nonetheless, but I want to, you know, other than the emotion, when you get down to the testimony and, and what's actually being said, I'm, I'm hearing a willingness to work through this, and that's what I'm encouraged by.
Yeah, I wanted to follow up. I'm not sure if it was Dr. Berg or Dr. Shea, they had mentioned, and Speaker, you kind of elaborated on it a little bit earlier about the meeting, our meetings with physicians, and I want to say it was brought up, that there was a meeting over the weekend with, I believe, one of the doctors.
Dr. Uggins.
Yeah, Dr. Jolene Uggins, can you tell us what exactly that meeting?
I'll recap that. So Dr. Berg in his testimony had said that the Dr. Jolene Uggins, that either there was a meeting, or they had offered to meet with Speaker, and they had the solution. So Speaker, what can you tell us about that?
I, I have many meetings, last week especially, even over the weekend, and I've met with several doctors, and so they're all giving their suggestions as to a solution, and, and I am very open to those. So I actually met with Dr. Jolene several times this weekend, but on, you know, we talked about different things, but they're, they're just, they're talking about alternatives to make the arbitration process more affordable, of course. They're again, well, she and, and some of those that she was with are talking about ways to fund the arbitration for those who can't afford it. So that's their idea, is to, kind of to fund through, you know, fees through doctors, you know, things like that. But I think we need to hash that idea out a little bit more, but of course, that's not an, that's an idea that we had also hashed out last year, when that was proposed by some of the other doctors, and it just ended up not to be enough, or, and I wasn't sure that they had consensus. So that's one of the things, when I meet with these doctors, I'm asking them, yeah, who do they represent, and do they have consensus? And so I think they're also working on that, on their side, to get consensus on their ideas, and also whether it's feasible, you know. So we're, we're trying to look at whether funding it through, funding the current arbitration through a fee source from the doctors is feasible. So, and of course, it is, that's, that's a viable alternative.
You know, Chris.
There are other things that they've talked about that I appreciate as well, and that is, I think they've come to a realization that there is a need for better communication between patient and doctor. So I love that that is what this bill has done, is that is made, made more focus on that, and so it seems like they're all trying, a lot of them are trying to, you know, look back at their processes in that regard, and see what they can do as a community in, within their own clinics, I'm hoping, and then, you know, if there's more we need to mandate on that end, we can also do that, if that's necessary. But I'm hoping that they, within their own community, are going to be able to, you know, step up and do that as well. Sorry, Senator Duennius.
Senator Duennius?
No, no problem. I didn't know where you're at, and I didn't want to interrupt, Madam Speaker, but one thing, Chris, that I think is coming out now, that with my meetings with the doctors at my office and in other settings, is that, you know, the, they don't want it to be cost prohibitive at this point from the, from the arbitration side, they do want to try to find a solution to that. What, what they continue to maintain is that they look at the mandatory arbitration as the screening process, and that, and that, that, that is the, the way that it kind of makes sure that these cases that come forward, you know, what, when they're going to go into the realm of actually settlement, trial, or other type of whatever remedy is there, and, you know, is, is, is intact, right? So if it really truly does come down to affordability, which it has been, I'm not saying it hasn't been, but then I think this is where they're, this is where we have to kind of, I think, find the meeting of the minds. Is it the mandatory arbitration, or is it the money, right? So if it's the mandatory arbitration that they say has been the, has been what has been the gatekeeper, if you will, with regard to screening malpractice cases, then let's boil down, boil that down, right? Is that really what it is? And if so, how do we enhance that process? I also think we have to really look at how cases are being handled at, from the medical board level. I think that, you know, this is two-part at this point, and I think that a lot of the grievances that several of the folks came forward with is that their voices just aren't being heard, that they feel as though the system is rigged against them when they feel like they have a very compelling case coming forward. So whether it's at the review process, or whether it's the fact that, is this the correct gatekeeper still, but we need to make sure that the, the affordability situation is mitigated? I, to me, that's what I feel it boiling down to. I also feel like the small claims issue is something that we're going to have to address, that might have to shift a little bit to a different scenario, or, or be built in as well. One thing I wanted to say on, on standard of care as well, because I think this is very important for our community, Chris, you've been talking about this a lot. The doctors that I talk to, from what I understand from the medical system, the standard of care discussion is when there is life-threatening situations. In general, most practitioners sometimes are saying, and this is where it's gotten kind of, you know, where we have to now discuss and, and see if this is really the case, now that it's going to the level of the clinical level and what other services are being provided, basically on managing care, right? But from what I've understood in the past, the, the real issues that they face is, and doctors mentioned this in their testimony, when there's life and death situations, when they have to make critical decisions in a short period of time, you know, is, is generally when they're talking about the standard of care. But if now what we're talking about is, is everyday care at the clinical level and other services, we really need to discuss that, because that's, that's very, that was an alarming thing that I've been listening to.
Senator, I know that you, and paraphrasing the doctors, have described the arbitration process as a filter, but the takeaway I got from the testimony is it acts more like a wall, because we've only seen one or two arbitration cases over the last however many years. But Speaker, I wanted to ask, so the doctors, they obviously don't want to remove this arbitration process, what does your bill do to the arbitration process? And does it remove it in any way? Unmute.
You're unmuted. The bill continues to allow for arbitration. I've been trying to make this very, very clear, but that, I think, is one of the big confusions. So they think that we've removed the arbitration process, but we haven't. I'm trying to make a shift from this current process of arbitration, where you have to go through a certain company, and you have to pay certain fees, to the Guam arbitration law, which is in place for very complex litigations as well, and it seems to have worked very well, where parties and arbitration is by agreement of the parties. And in doing that, the parties end up agreeing on the costs, and they can control costs that way. So you've heard several of the doctors say, we can make changes like Zoom, we can make changes, you know, that make it more cost-effective. Yes, you can, if you can agree to your arbitration process. But if you can't, and you have to go to one certain type of arbitration, and you must have three people on your panel, you cannot control the costs. So this is, this is that, it's arbitration with an option to control the costs, and that's why I thought it would be very attractive to all parties, because it looks like even insurance companies are willing to do this, I think, to control their costs through the use of even one arbitrator, they, you've seen them use a retired judge in certain cases, so things like that. And that's, that's how you get there, is you allow the parties to control their arbitration. That's what's done in other jurisdictions as well. So that's what's the unique part of Guam, is that we're mandating them all to go to a certain company, and to have this three-panel, and that type of thing.
But the doctors, obviously, they want to keep the mandatory arbitration as the pre-screening, but do you see that as a deal breaker?
Oh, well, there's, there's several issues. One is, do they want to take the same cut, type of arbitration, or are they willing to go through the Guam arbitration law, which allows the parties to decide the type of arbitration, right? Second is, are they willing to allow mediation, which our bill does, or do they want to preclude that? And when they say we are going to mandate arbitration, that means only arbitration, not mediation, not a screening panel, only arbitration. And so that's the difference. And so mandating, continuing to mandate arbitration, I just thought it would be good to give them other options. So they, we're mandating a screening, so we're mandating, you can't get to trial, we continue to mandate that unless you do one of these things, but we're not mandating that you go through a certain arbitration process, we're, we're mandating arbitration by the Guam arbitration law, or mediation by the Guam mediation law, or you go through the screening through a magistrate.
I know we only have a couple, a few minutes left, and I, I don't think we can go over the top of the hour today, but I wanted to ask, what's the next step? So you've had the two public hearings, I know that you had said on this very show that there might be another one, or maybe more roundtables, but as it stands now this morning, what's the status with Bill one twelve and the way forward?
I think we're trying to confirm a hearing date. As you know, we're, we're also looking at the budget coming up, so we are just trying to make sure that we don't conflict with that, and that we can put our full attention onto the budget as well. So we're trying to confirm a hearing date, as well as I, I think it will be manageable for senators and those who are testifying to do this in a roundtable kind of setting, where they're, we, we address smaller groups and address their concerns. And I think from the testimony, my staff has been analyzing it, we can see some common threads, and so I'd like to, you know, those who are proposing a different way to arbitrate, you know, I'd like to, you know, hone in on that, get their ideas of what, how different to arbitrate instead of the Guam arbitration law that we're proposing, right? And then those who are just absolutely against any other type of screening besides arbitration, yeah, we, I'd like to just, you know, finesse their issues with the magistrate judge, and, or if they have someone else who they're going to recommend, because I'm, as I've said before, when I, when we decided on a magistrate judge to be the screener for Guam, we were trying to find somebody, in light of what has happened at the boards and the complaints that we have received, that, so we're trying to find somebody who the community would accept as being the independent person, right, and an impartial determiner of, of whether there was malpractice, a screener. And so that's why we, we look through our justice system, because that's where we look in our system of, for, you know, where we, we want somebody to be fair and impartial. And so I'm still open on that, but I, you know, it's, there's a, as, as we heard at the hearings, there's still some issues, you know, regarding other ways.
Madam Speaker, were you ever able to find out who hired that California attorney who said he was hired by the Guam medical community to, I think we just played his testimony, Attorney Ed Lear?
I, I heard on the media, not directly, that he was hired by Dr. Berg. So that's what I heard him say on another media, and that's all I know.
Okay, I know I just said we weren't going to go over the top of the hour, but I didn't have breakfast this morning, so eating my own words tastes pretty good. We're actually going to go over the top of the hour and continue the discussion on the other side, because we did have some more questions for our panel here. So with that being said, good morning to our listeners on the breeze, and our viewers on Facebook Live, and let's get ready to go right into KUAM TV. Good morning, Guam! Right on, and we're back. Hey, KUAM TV, my name's Chris.
I'm Sabrina.
That's Jason Solis. Hi, Jason.
Good morning.
All right, and we're just going to get right into it. Viewers on KUAM TV, we're currently in discussion on Bill one twelve, oh, I'm sorry, the controversial Bill one twelve, and in the KUAM News Zoom Room, we have Speaker Teresa Lahey, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Telo Tidigui, and Minority Leader Senator Chris Duennius. And we'll just continue with the Speaker, just real quick, your response to?
The letter, the letter from Chief Justice Philip, F. Philip Carbelito regarding Bill one twelve.
I, I agree with the courts, if we are going to put this on them, that they will need some time to adjust, obviously, and to be prepared. So I, I don't see any issue with that. I think we have seen during the pandemic, and since Judge Sikola retired, that they have changed the duties of the magistrate, or, you know, rearranged them accordingly, and so I know that they are able to do, to arrange themselves over at the court as necessary, but we can give them some time to do that. And we are having a confirmation hearing for the judge, the new judge, this Friday, and so I'm expecting that that will help to alleviate things at the court since Judge Sikola retired. We are also going to be going through the budget process, so, and we, we have heard from the court that they are expecting ARP funds as well. So I expect that their finances and, and their resources, you know, will be, that they will be able to manage those adequately. As to the concerns that magistrates will need training, this is the case for any, any type of case that's going to come before any type of judge. We don't train judges necessarily and to be physicians, and so when they are going to hear cases, that's just the duty of the judiciary, is to ensure that their judges are trained as necessary. And I think none of them starts off as an expert in, in many things, including criminal law. We have many judges who have never even practiced criminal law as lawyers, but they become judges, and they're handling criminal trials, and some very, very complex civil litigation as well. And so we do expect them to, to gain competence in those areas, to be informed by expert witnesses and, and the evidence, and to do their due diligence. So we expect no less from magistrates as well.
Were you anticipating, though, the, this judiciary response? Because I know this wasn't written by you or inquiring, this was from the vice speaker who actually wrote to the judiciary regarding the bill. And as I recall, she pulled out her sponsorship from the measure.
She pulled out her what? I can't hear you.
Her sponsorship, her?
Oh, yes.
Right?
Yeah. So after that, she wrote a letter to the judiciary, they responded. I also invited them, of course, to submit testimony. They said they, it was, it would not be present, but that they would submit testimony in writing. You know, we've invited the judiciary to submit testimony on many, many bills, and it's rare that they actually do that. We have some bills that are still pending, you know, regarding criminal matters, or, you know, how to handle the process for criminal matters, and, yeah, we're still waiting for some testimony in those.
She showed up to any of the? She showed up to any of the, um, public hearings?
Who?
The vice speaker.
Vice speaker. Oh, she was there at the first one? Uh, yes, for, for, oh, in the beginning, yes.
Senator Joanne, what did you make of this, uh, argument, uh, with the magistrate judge? Because to me, it just seemed kind of mind boggling that we have to go back and explain how the legal system and the courts work. Senator Joanne?
Uh, sorry, Chris, I, I didn't hear you. You were just having a little difficulty in our end hearing. Um, well, I, I mean, you know, the judicial process, it's, it's part of the three branches of government, it's part of our government structure. And, um, you know, it's, it's an expectation certainly the public would have, that they would have recourse through the judicial process. Of course, if there are things that can be put in place, um, to still address the concerns of the community and minimize, uh, the financial impact on everyone. I mean, I'm sure if you, you had a medical malpractice and you're a physician, that, that's not something that's going to be a walk in the park. I'm sure that's also going to be something that's going to weigh on you heavily. I mean, in terms of your profession, uh, you know, what the doctors had relayed, uh, even if a settlement happens, there's going to be an assumption of guilt because, you know, we settled on the case because maybe the insurance company or the, you know, the clinic you're working for decides that, you know, it's going to cost us more time and money to continue to fight it, let's just settle. And then, you know, they feel that's, it could be a stain on their record, even though they may personally feel they never did anything wrong in the first place. And so, you know, we recognize those challenges. I mean, if you, 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 uh, you know, spent all those years of study and, and investment to become a medical professional, a doctor, uh, and then you have an accusation that, uh, you know, you didn't properly practice your, your profession, uh, that, you know, you took some negligent action. I mean, of course, I, if I were, I want to make sure my record's clean as well, and that I didn't bring any harm to anyone, especially if I know I, I did not in my training and what I, making my decision. Uh, but right now, the system is just set up that there's no, there's no ability, almost no ability for most people. I mean, we talked about those that don't have the money, but we're talking most people do not have those type of resources. I mean, they're saying, oh, forty, fifty thousand to go through arbitration if you don't agree, you want to take it to court. You know, who has that kind of money sitting around for this type of purpose? But if you feel you've been harmed negligently, and we're talking about negligent practices, if a loved one of yours has been harmed, uh, you know, seriously, or even to the point of death, um, you know, you have to have some means of addressing that in our community. I don't think that, you know, what we're, what, especially during the first hearing, we, we were hearing from the medical community very much that, uh, you know, if you pursue this, you're going to lose all the, all the additional capacity that we've gained over the years. We're not going to have specialists, we're going to have doctors that are going beyond their, their, their current, uh, training, because otherwise a patient cannot get treatment, they're not able to go off island, they're not able to get any other type of care for their condition, and the sky is going to fall down. And I think that approach of, um, you know, to that degree, instead of how can we sit down, which is kind of, uh, you know, the, what we were hearing a little more the other night, is that there are options that can be looked at, hopefully that we can come to consensus, uh, that can address the very concerns of ensuring that anybody in our community that feels they've been negligently harmed, and we're talking about negligent practices here, uh, that they have recourse to address that. If it's, if it's starting the process of sitting down and having that dialogue first through mediation, which is, uh, you know, can be more cost effective and allow for that type of open dialogue, then let's look at that. But I don't think we can simply do nothing, uh, you know, and have these constant threats. I, I think now we need to move away from the threats and the accusations and, and work towards where can we find consensus. And, and the judicial process is part of that. I don't think most people want to go through it if they don't have to, because it's a very, it's a very difficult and it's a very expensive process as well. Uh, but we have to have some sense of justice in our community and not the thought that, oh, well, if a certain percentage are negligently harmed, well, that's okay, because, uh, otherwise you're not going to get this care on Guam. And I, I just think there has to be a balance, uh, beyond that discussion. And that's what we're open to, I mean, we're committed to it, we're, we'll attend the next hearing or the next hearing that the speaker has, and, and certainly if we can get down to having, uh, more direct dialogue through, uh, roundtable discussions, and representatives from the medical community can come forth also and work with us on viable solutions, uh, that can work for our community, we're, we're very open to that.
I thought it was very interesting, and, uh, that, there's some of the orchestration with the vice speaker. I mean, first of all, so eager to abandon ship on this bill before even hearing from a single patient. I thought that was very telling. And then to, to go behind your back and write to the judiciary, and then to give that letter to Senator Moylan, who tried to read it out of the hearing, I just, I see the orchestration and the attacks and, and all that stuff. And I, I just got to ask, I mean, does it, does it get old? I mean, we're so early in this process, but the, the response has been, there's a saying, use a nuclear bomb to kill a housefly. That's kind of what we're seeing here, Senator Telo.
Well, uh, you know, I, I'm pretty sure they're getting a lot of pressure from doctors, you know, they're listening. It sounds to me like, you know, she's listening more to the doctors than the people of Guam. I mean, you have, uh, uh, many that, doctors or healthcare providers who signed on a petition. I think it's a, a little bit, um, over three hundred and fifty, almost four hundred. But then you have a petition that's signed by over four thousand, uh, constituents on this island who have an issue with the current, uh, law right now that prohibits them from, you know, seeking justice. And yeah, it's, I think she jumped the gun, you know, without listening to the people and seeing these testimonies coming in every day. And I'd like to encourage those who are listening today to continue. Um, just because we finished this, uh, last hearing, um, doesn't mean it's stopping. You know, we're, we're continuing to receive some testimony and encourage the, um, public to continue to do so. Um, and greatly appreciate it. But I, I think that, uh, you know, without listening to everyone and jumping, jumping the gun like that, um, it's, it's got to be pressure on the doctors' end, and it's unfortunate. But I think what we need to focus on here again is to stay the course with regards to the inability for those to seek, um, justice and, and have that means of, of that one unbiased opinion, you know, to let you know that whether a standard of care was met or not. And, you know, a standard of care, if you look at the legal perspective, and that's what's very important, you know, because you're going to a court of law or, or you're going into, uh, any kind of screening panel that reuse the standard of care. And it's actually two-fold. It's not only the standard of care, but it's the ability of what is surrounding the physician at the time within their grasp. Uh, do I have the equipment to be able to test this individual patient? Uh, you know, to, uh, diagnose what the issue is with them? Uh, do I have the availability of other specialists to assist me? The standard here is within that physician's reach of what they have and they can use to determine any kind of diagnosis is, is what's been used today. That's where it's very confusing. What has changed, uh, these physicians' practice today that's going to change if Bill 112 goes forward? You know, we looked at, um, the demographics of other states and, and we always try to compare ourselves with Hawaii and California, because that's the closest we are. And it shows that with a population of a hundred thousand, uh, people, the, the amount of individuals who filed mild, uh, medical malpractice suits that actually came into a claim at the end of the result was five out of a hundred thousand. So you look at Guam's population, you're looking at about maybe six, you know, coming through. And this is data that's, you know, been given to us from other states in Hawaii, and I think Louisiana was forty-five, you know, uh, per one hundred thousand. But, um, you're looking at Guam, I mean, uh, Hawaii and California. So the question is, if, if these doctors currently to date are practicing within that standard of care of what they have available, also to be able to notify your patients that you are not in, in a field of, uh, what you've been trained in, but I, and, and notifying your patients of that, to give them the ability, a choice to continue the care with that particular doctor, or to seek care off island. You know, many of our people go off island, those who can't afford it, uh, there's public assistance, you know, nonprofit organizations. I mean, that's the reality about living here on Guam. And I know that many friends of mine who have medical issues had to live in the States, moved to the States. My sister, for an example, has a daughter who was born with two holes in her heart. And as a child, you know, it was very difficult for her to, to be able to live on Guam because of the care her daughter needs. Um, so it's hard for her to come back to Guam. And her daughter now is in, in her thirties and, and doing really well, you know? But, um, things like that put us in this predicament that is beyond our control. Certain things are beyond our control. Getting sick is beyond our control sometimes. Unfortunately, we don't want to veer away from the main goal, and that's what I'm seeing too, by the way, uh, Chris and Sabrina, is that, uh, doctors are starting to push the fact that Guam has to, uh, you know, we need to work on our healthcare system on the island. Granted, that's like an endless well. We were always going to have to work on our, our healthcare system on Guam. That's going to be ongoing constantly, constantly. So let's not veer away from what we're trying to establish here, the ability for individuals to seek justice. I mean, and through what we're seeing that medical malpractice is the third leading cause of death in the U.S., third. That's very, very high. Now, it was mentioned too about our culture. We're a culture that usually doesn't like to, you know, sue anybody, or they're tumamalo, or don't, they're, they don't want to get involved. You know, we're not a culture of suing, but I can tell you right now, yeah, times have changed. People are realizing they deserve more. They deserve really good care. You know, it's, and, and now they're speaking out. Now they're opening up and saying, wait a minute, you know, um, why can't I get that same kind of care, or at least that same type of justice system that's available to everybody else in the U.S. except Guam? And what people are forgetting, Guam is the only state, U.S. territory jurisdiction that has mandatory arbitration that's binding, binding. We're the only jurisdiction, not even Saipan has that. So doctors, and it mentioned, you mentioned it, Chris, in the last time that we're finding, uh, this is a shield for doctors. One particular doctor said that. It's a shield for doctors. Well, what about our people on Guam, which is the majority of people on this island that cannot afford it, that do not have a shield? You know, we, we're looking at a balance here, and, and we're trying to find a solution. These doctors are finally coming, and like Speaker said earlier, admitting there is an issue. They're admitting to it. So this is the start, this is the beginning. We're breaking that barrier. We're breaking that barrier to let them see that. And I think, I think that pressure is coming to the doctors because their patients are actually coming and talking to them about this. And, and, you know, a lot of times if you, if a doctor is talking to a patient, they'll just keep quiet. Look, look at yourself, when you go into a doctor's office and the doctor starts talking, you're basically just quiet. Everything he says or she says is golden. But that's not necessarily true, because people on Guam, they have a mind of their own, and they are putting two and two together. And sometimes it does not come out to four.
Uh, I know Sabrina's, uh, sorry, Senator, Sabrina has one last question, then we've really got to wrap, because we're getting backed up here. Sabrina?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on, uh, one of your closing, uh, comments, Speaker Terlahi, um, at the end of the hearing, when you mentioned that you, you may hold another public hearing, a roundtable, then you also said an oversight hearing? Can you kind of clarify what you meant by that?
Well, there were certain things that were brought up that, oh, we should be doing this, we should, and we should be doing that. There's so many things, yes, that we should be doing. There are certain things I thought that we could assure the community were being done through an oversight hearing. For example, the peer review at, at Guam Memorial Hospital. That's one way that doctors are supposed to be, you know, um, looking at incidences that happen and, and, uh, you know, with their peers, ensuring that that was, uh, you know, standard of care. And so I had been assured by the Guam Memorial Hospital, um, in the recent months, that their peer review was actually much improved. And so I was just thinking that that would be one of the ways to help the doctors to ensure the community, you know, whether it, whether it was improved or not. And because that, that's very important for ensuring standard of care in facilities like the hospital. And examining peer review is another way, you know, they, they talk about, we should be doing this ourselves on the board and stuff, but that's not actually mandated by law. So I wanted to show, well, that's my idea right now, it's called an oversight regarding the peer review at the hospital, so that they can, um, highlight, you know, how they do that and how, how it has improved. Because we have many reports that say it, you know, it was, um, just not operating properly in the past. So I'm hoping that it, that is correct, that it is operating correctly now, and that if they are a good model, then, then that could be a model for other clinics and other entities to also set up, or for the board itself to, you know, look at. The Board of Medical Examiners, for example, to look at, to establish for the, the rest of the community outside the hospital.
And, and just real quickly, on the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, are you aware of this lawsuit, this complaint that was filed, uh, June fifteenth by Attorney Vanessa Williams, uh, regarding GBME's, uh, failure to implement, uh, and establish this website so that people in the community can, can search whether or not their doctor's ever, has ever been disciplined?
That's correct. I actually have had several oversights of the Guam Medical Board and the Allied Health Board and the HPLO Office in, at Public Health because of complaints for different things like this, like, uh, they, you know, complaints about their complaints not being handled properly, complaints that it was taking too long, complaints that there has still been no hearings. You know, despite, um, what I thought, they had made arrangements already, RFPs, hiring lawyers and, and other people to do investigations, to do the prosecution of these complaints, and to be the, you know, the AG's office to be the hearing officer. But we've also followed up with them, yeah, regarding the reporting requirements, um, why they were not complied with, and we were assured, oh, that's being done right now, we had to get professional help to do that. And that was why it was delayed, and so that they were, but they had assured us at the hearing that they were, uh, going to be in compliance very shortly. But yes. And then, uh, other things, like, for example, malpractice insurance. Uh, we have a law that malpractice insurance companies are supposed to be reporting to these boards. This is one of the reasons why it was so difficult for us to get data, because there are no reports anywhere as to, you know, malpractice claims. And so when I'm trying to follow up with that, um, they said they had not received any over years. It was a year span that I had asked about. And so I followed up again to see if they were following up, uh, with these companies. So every malpractice insurance company is supposed to be reporting to the, the licensing boards. And if, for those who are not covered by a malpractice insurance company, you're supposed to personally be reporting to the boards. But that, that has not been done either. But I'm telling, I don't even know if any oversight over these boards has ever been done over the years, or, you know, I, I kind of think I'm the first, because I've never seen it before. And, uh, but yeah, I just thought it was, it was a very, it's a growing concern, and it's, it's still a concern. And, um, most recently, we asked for an accounting from HPLO Office at Public Health, who oversees all these boards. To get to the bottom of this, uh, you know, they're saying, uh, I, I, I've only heard it in the media where they say, you know, we need funding, because there are no direct letters to me regarding their funding, because we've appropriated for these boards all their licensing fees. That means nurses, if they have more, they're going to get, you know, more fees, because, and they, they're supposed to take those fees and, and govern their, their industry, their healthcare, uh, profession, right, with those fees. And so one board said, uh, this was several years ago when I first became chair, that they had never seen their fees ever. So, you know, that was the first thing that I did as the healthcare chair, was make sure that these boards know what their fees are, that they are entitled to that money, and that the HPLO Office gives them that money. And so now we have seen them encumber, some of the boards have encumbered the money. There seems to have been a break, because if you heard Dr., um, I think it was Yasuhiro and some other doctors who had served on these boards before, and they talk about, you know, how well they were run and how many complaints they handled, that they got, um, you know, that they actually took action against some of the people. But we haven't really been seeing that recently. We haven't been seeing hearings, and we haven't been seeing, uh, uh, many adverse actions. I, there were none from twenty eighteen to the present on the, on the medical licensing board.
Which is interesting that, uh, some of the doctors hold that up as a viable alternative to your bill. Um, but we have to go, we're way behind, but I want to thank you. to your bill. Uh, we have to go, we're way behind, but I want to thank you, uh, Madam Speaker, Senator Joanne, Senator Telo, Minority Leader, Senator Chris. Uh, it's been real.
Thank you.
Have a great week.
Please keep submitting testimonials. Be safe.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right. Good stuff, eight twenty-five. Let's go right back into the KUAM News Zoom Room, where Labor Director Dave Delasola is standing by. Good morning, Dave.
Good morning, Chris. How you guys doing? Good morning, Sabrina. How you, how are you?
Doing pretty good. It's interesting discussion on Bill 112 always, but we wanted to bring